Twenty-fifth, and we will convene our regularly, regular scheduled Board of County Commission meeting.
Tommy Stillwell, who was a former county commissioner, he was elected in 2016, and he had to take care of his family members, and he resigned in April of 2017, passed away. So if you'll remember him in your thoughts and prayers, and we will be having a wreath at his funeral when that time comes with our Putnam County emblem. But Mr. Stillwell was a great commissioner for the little short time he served, and he is a fellow commissioner, and we should honor him today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If we can have, uh, pass.
Do so.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we pause this morning as we come together, Lord acknowledging you for your goodness and your grace and your mercy. Lord, you are the sovereign God, omniscient, omnipresent, and omnipotent. And Father, to whom else could we come except to you, Lord? And so we, uh, we honor you this morning. Father, we turn to you because there is none other which we might turn. And so, Father, first of all, we ask for your comfort to be upon the Stillwell family upon their loss, thanking you for the dedicated service of Mr. Stillwell in the past, Lord. Father, be with this family as they deal with his loss, and thank you for the privilege of being able to, uh, to be a partner with him in the work of this county. Lord, we do thank you for all of these that are gathered here today, each and every one that has dedicated themselves to public service, Lord. And so, Father, I would personally ask that you would bless each of them, magnify their efforts, Lord, help them to be very productive. At the same time, Lord, help us to know that we can turn to you, we must turn to you, for wisdom, for guidance, for direction. And so, Father, help us open our hearts and open our minds, Lord, as we consider others more highly than ourselves. And, Father, that's a difficult thing for any one of us to do. Lord, empower us in a way that we've not seen in the past. Lord, help us to be more than we ever could be, Lord, and guide us and lead us today in the work that's to be done in this meeting. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
My pledge is to apply the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation, God, and individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please silence your phones if you have not done so already. Approval of the minutes, I have one change on Ride Solutions. Ashley, that was, his name was Boyd, Boyd Thompson instead of Blake, but that's the only change I have.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the minutes as stated and amended.
All right, we have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving into our presentations, UF Ifis, blueberry season. And while they're making their way up, I do want to recognize Ms. Annie, Councilwoman Annie Davis from the city of Palaca for being here today. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Y'all know what season it is?
Blueberry season.
It is berry season. Berry season. I'm sorry that Tim Campbell couldn't make us, make it today, but I did want to give a quick update. I talked to him this morning. He is, uh, they started strawberries out at Miller Blueberry.
I saw that.
And so they started their U-Pick on Friday and sold out this weekend.
Wow.
So they're a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty acres of blueberries, three acres of strawberries as of this year, two acres of blackberries, and two acres of sunflowers. So please get out to the farms in berry season. Strawberries are every weekend until April, and then blueberries will start in April. He told me that blueberries are way behind this season, couple weeks behind, because it was cold. Y'all remember February? Yeah, that was the wrong time for chill hours. Our blueberries love chill hours, but not when they're flowering, so. Today we're here because we have a neat partnership, and this is a great way for y'all to understand how extension works. So as the agriculture agent, I work with our commercial farmers. As our 4-H agent, Heather works with the youth. As our horticulture agent, Julio teaches our youth how to grow something. And our youth is here today to talk to y'all. I'm gonna let Heather introduce, or Julio introduce, the project that we do every year at the fair, just so y'all get a little bit of understanding of what extension is doing.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we, I've been here for three years now, and how long have we been doing Berry Project?
I've been doing Berry Project for twenty-nine years.
Okay, so Berry Project is a great opportunity for our youth to learn some responsibility because this berry bush did not look like this when she got it, I can testify to that. And she is doing an incredible job, and she's gonna tell you a little bit more about that. But we have a Berry Project book, so the kids obviously get to do record-keeping, they learn some incredible life skills. The night of the fair, they're gonna be out there talking to people of the sale, they're gonna be out talking to people. We had a meeting last night prepping them, teaching them about the things they can talk to folks about and about working in their record books. So it's just a great opportunity for our youth. I've told you guys before that these kids are our future leaders, and so this is how we're prepping them. You might think they're just growing a blueberry bush, but they are just gaining some incredible life skills. So this is Tatum Lynn, and she's just gonna speak to you for a quick moment about her blueberry project. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tatum Lynn, and I am in the Books and Dose 4-H Club. This is my fifth year doing the Blueberry Project. Last year I won Best of Show, and I was able to sell them in the live auction Friday night for $250. I have kept a record book throughout my Blueberry Project so that I can speak to people during the silent auction. I can let them know what I did to repot my bushes and how much I would need to break even. I'd like to invite you out to the fair on Friday, March 28th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And all the, to see all the kids' projects, hopefully purchase some in the silent auction.
Very good. Thank you, Tatum. That was a great, a great presentation.
It really was.
Thank y'all.
I do want to say before you leave, we, we have Rural County Day up in Tallahassee in April, and for the audience and everybody in the public, we will be showcasing blueberries from Putnam County, and it's a great partnership. But that's, so we're, we're taking blueberries to Tallahassee from Putnam County.
March.
In March.
March.
March, sorry. So yeah, that's good. Thank you. Is that?
Bring them up for a picture.
Would you like to come up for a picture?
Bring your blueberry with you.
Melinda, you guys can come up to Grandpa, Grandma.
How about the variety name? Do you know the variety name? Optimus, all right. Just for you, Larry, just for you.
All right. Three, two, one. Close up, close up.
And I do encourage y'all, just one more thing. Please, during berry season, for everyone, if you can't get out to the farms and do a U-Pick or buy directly from the farm, when you're in Publix or Walmart or anywhere you go, please look fresh from Florida.
Absolutely.
Because that is what keeps our farmers in business, fresh from Florida. Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Next up, we have.
Good morning. Alex Sharp, P.O. Box 953, Hollister, Florida. How's everybody doing this morning?
Good.
Wonderful.
Mr. Sharp, I think your group all wants to come up here.
They certainly can.
Yep.
Where's our tech guy? Cause his computer's locked.
She's coming right now.
Oh, wait, wait. There we go.
Okay.
There we go. So I, I am here, uh, is everybody up?
Y'all are welcome to come up if you want. It's your choice.
Everybody come on up. Let's, let's get everybody up here. That's a tough act to follow with the blueberries.
I know.
I didn't bring any small children with me. I'm sorry.
I know. Cute ones, too.
I know. Well, wait.
Normally do.
You're here.
You can wear the hat, though, if you want, if you hurry.
We fully expected your son to be with you.
I would, if I would've got him up. All right, so how do we start this thing here?
She's coming.
I think I got it.
Choke it.
Did that work? So I, I'm here on behalf of three organizations that I think all of you guys are familiar with. Palaca Sunrise Rotary, the Sons of the American Revolution, which I just became a new member of. John graciously found some relative of mine on the family, on the mother's side that fought in the Revolutionary War. And, and the, one of my favorite organizations, the Daughter of the American Revolution, Daughters of American Revolution. As all of you already know, I've bombarded you with literature, emails, and such. It's coming up on America's 250th anniversary. Back in 1776, we decided we no longer wanted to be under British rule, and we broke away and formed this country that we're in right now. And one of the things that was instrumental in that breaking away was that the people that wanted to break away had to have a place to gather. And where they gathered in Boston was under a tree, and it was called the Liberty Tree. And it was an elm, an elm tree, which is indigenous to Florida. And what the organizations, the, I'll call them SAR and DAR, are doing is they are replanting these trees or designating these trees all across, across the country to recognize that event that's coming up next year. And we would really like to have one in Putnam County. And the way that this dovetailed in with the Sunrise Rotary is, as you know, several years ago, the Palaca Sunrise Rotary, let me get here to it, did a project involving Putnam, uh, some Putnam County property, the welcome sign at Highway 17 as it comes into Palaca at the intersection. Most of y'all are familiar with that. Our Sunrise Rotary, we took that project on under Brent Coats, and we repainted the entire sign. It had fallen into a little disarray, nothing wrong with that. We repainted all the lettering, we landscaped it. We eventually ended up, there was already a place for a flag, but I believe that original flag pole had been removed because of the power poles. We did, uh, we did remove the, we did put one in at first, but we decided it was too small. We wanted a bigger flag pole. Every man can sympathize with me on that. We want a large flag pole to raise that flag up. And that's there now. Now, there was a, if you look up on the screen here, this was the end of that project that Palaca Sunrise was gonna take on. Originally, we had wanted to honor all of our armed forces and have the military insignia behind the sign there. And in the centerpiece, we were going to have the American flag. That's really not what we want to do now. As I'm here today, we would like to take, this is the area here, if you're not familiar with it, and I keep calling it Triangle Park. Have I called it Triangle? It's actually the John Theobald Sports Complex. I need to recognize that. This is what we're envisioning without the other trees, just one tree. And it's, it would be a sapling, it would be an area that veterans could come. We could have, it's already an open park. That area is, it's a huge field there. We could have events there, and all three of the clubs would be responsible for maintaining this and getting. Benjamin Putman, he a legislator, he was involved in those wars, and he was, you know, he was a lawyer, too, so. And that's what we're named after. And it, it's just a, a great way to preserve our history, educate people about the Liberty Tree and what went on almost 250 years ago, and to, and to honor our other military services. And with your permission and staff's direction, we'd like permission to go ahead and finish up this project and make that a small area dedicated to our armed services and have, have, have our own Putnam County Liberty Tree here in Putnam County. And that's it. I, I rushed through that because I know y'all have a busy schedule, but I am open to any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the request for a tree at John Theobald Sports Complex behind the city of Palac, welcome to Palac.
I absolutely second that motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, sign. All right, congratulations.
You guys are great.
Thank you for your presentation.
It's gonna be a great asset for Putnam County. Can we do pictures, too?
Absolutely.
All right. So do we, you want us to shift around? Yeah, that would probably be easier.
Come on, guys. Y'all wanna get in over there?
Okay.
Come, come stand in front of the small guy.
I'm right here, I'm behind you, Mary.
Yep. Okay. Everybody get seen? Blake, we got another guy.
Come on, John. You were instrumental in all this.
Right. Three, two, one.
Don't play with people in the paper.
Three, two, one. I'm not touching anything else.
Aw, thank you. Again, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Same time. Yes, ma'am. I like your hat. I like your hat.
Thank you.
Sally, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't, don't let him forget his hat, Sally. Next time, come in with a flute playing, okay? I would've liked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here. Yeah.
All right, employee recognition?
Find out where the cuts are.
Just a second.
Employee connection?
Morning to everybody. This morning, I just wanted to pull Kayla Wiley up. She is one of our operators. She runs our RO plant for the water. Just get your glasses, yep. And anytime someone betters themselves and goes for further education, I think that needs to be recognized. Kayla just recently, and it's in your packets, but I'll read it for the public, just finished her Associate in Science Environmental Technology. She also got a certification for Water Quality Technician and Environmental Science Technician, all from Florida Gateway College. And this was, just happened this past December. And so I wanted to give Kayla the recognition that she deserves for trying to be the best water programmer we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I thought I was here to talk about RO membranes.
You are. That's later on in the, in the party.
But thank you. I appreciate the recognition.
Well, let me say from somebody who's worked full-time and had to get, and, and got her education once in a time, I understand what she went through, so you should be very proud. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we'd love a picture.
There you go. I got a roadblock in front of me.
I see that.
We love to see our employees make strides in improving their education. All right, moving into Planning and Development Public Hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. The first case is REZONE. It's case number 24-000012. The applicant is Robin Matthews. They're requesting a zoning map amendment from Residential Mobile Home Park, RMH, to Residential 2 on a 0.85 acre parcel located at 135 Finney Trailer Park Road in Palaca, near the high school. Currently, there's one single-family residence located on the parcel, so the property is non-conforming with the RMH zoning district. It has a future land use designation of urban service according to the NWI Wetlands Layer and the FEMA Flood Zone Layer on the GIS reference map. There appears to be no jurisdictional wetlands, and it is within Special Flood Hazard Area X. There's already a home on the property, so if the application is approved, the property owner would be able to maintain their property in accordance with the Residential 2 zoning district. Here we have an aerial. You can see it's within an enclave surrounded by the city of Palaca. Future land use designation, zoning district. Staff is recommending approval of the request to amend the zoning map from Residential Manufactured Home Park to Residential 2 as it is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. The Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of this request on January 8th, 2025. I can take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody, anybody in the audience who wants to speak in favor or against this item? All right, coming back to the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, let me get my, REZONE, R-E-Z, 24-000012 Matthews, ordinance 2025-005, amending ordinance number 24-12, and by title that's stated in our packet on page 53. I won't read the entire thing, so I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Like, sign. All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, next on the agenda is two applications being read concurrently. One is a future land use map amendment, the other is a zoning map amendment. At the end, I will be seeking a determination on the future land use map amendment first, followed by the REZONE. Case numbers respectively are CPA 24-000005 and REZONE case 24-000013. The Jones family owns a six-acre parcel located in the rural residential future land use designation and in the agriculture estate zoning designation. They're requesting an amendment to ag future land use and ag zoning. Again, the property is six acres. It's located on 1722 County Road 308 in Crescent City, which is just north of the Eagle Landing, I think, subdivision. There are some special flood hazard areas located on the property. It is a waterfront property, so with that waterfront, there is some special flood hazard as well as some jurisdictional wetlands on approximately the north two and a half acres. Any development? If the request is approved, we'll have to be compliant with the ag future land use designation, the ag zoning district, and be developed in accordance with FEMA Special Flood Hazard Regulations and in consideration of the jurisdictional wetlands. Here we can see an aerial of the property. The future land use, you can see it is adjacent to the ag future land use designation. Here's the zoning, completely surrounded by agriculture. And this shows the wetlands on approximately that north half of the parcel. Staff is recommending approval of the request to amend the future land use map from rural residential to agriculture and recommending approval for the request to amend the zoning map from ag estate to agriculture as the requests are consistent with the Putnam County Land Development Code, the goals, objectives, the policies therein, and also Planning Commission recommended approval, January 8th, 2025 unanimously. I can take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, I'd move for approval of both, the future land use map amendment ending in '05 and the REZONE request ending in '13.
Okay, give me just a second. Let me ask for a public comment.
Okay.
Is there any public comment? This is a public hearing. Is there anybody for or against this item? All right, thank you. Sorry, Commissioner.
I second the motion that's on the floor.
My apology for the post step.
No, 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 we're doing fine. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, sign. Motion passes. That was on both of those, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right, land speed record this morning. Finally, we've got case REZ 24-000015. The applicants are Kathleen Weaver, Oscar Smith, and Carol Smith, being represented by Patrick Kennedy. This request is to amend the zoning map from agriculture to commercial neighborhood C1. The parcel is 2.22 acres, and it's located at 921 South Moody Road in Palaca. The request here in particular is for a dance studio. Directly across the street from the parcel, while it is within the city of Palaca's municipal boundaries, it is a commercial designation. And then to the east of the parcel, also city of Palaca, which is a multifamily development currently under construction. The subject site has a urban reserve future land use designation, approximately 150-foot of road frontage on Moody Road. And according to the National Wetlands Inventory Layer and the FEMA Flood Zone Layer on the GIS map, it does not appear to contain jurisdictional wetlands and is located within Flood Zone X. Should this request be approved prior to construction of the new commercial development, the project would need to be reviewed by the Development Review Committee. It's a multi-agency committee that looks at commercial developments and multifamily to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. So that would be the next step prior to development. Here we can see an aerial of the property. The future land use of the subject property and surrounding. The zoning district. And staff is recommending approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to commercial neighborhood C1 as it is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan. And also, January 8th, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval for this request.
All right, questions from the board. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Zach, I appreciate your presentation. When I got here many, many years ago, it, we really kind of didn't spell out what that development would be. And the reason I'm bringing it up is for our new Commissioners, just because it says to allow the development of the dance studio. It can be anything under C1 zoning, correct?
That is correct. The only reason we included the dance studio information is it was in the packet.
I get it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the Board? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or against this item? All right, see, oh, go ahead. All right. Attorney Kennedy's here.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval, make a motion to move approval of REZ 24-000015, rezoned from ag to commercial neighborhood C1 for Kathleen Weaver, Oscar Smith, and Carol Smith.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving into consented agenda items. Public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits to the right of the podium. Are there any comment cards for the consent agenda items? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak on consent agenda items only? All right, seeing none?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, oops, I'm sorry.
Is there any Commissioners who'd like to pull any consent agenda items? Commissioner Palisir, Commissioner Harvey.
No ma'am.
All right, now you can go.
We're all in a, I don't know why. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes to approve consent agenda items. Code enforcement. Do we have anybody here that wants to present code enforcements? That'd be great. I wasn't trying to be terse, that's just my personality.
It would be a good time for you to come then.
I'm just trying to get the work done.
Tom's usually watching the meetings and usually will slide in here, so, but I can go ahead and start.
It's okay, we were moving a little fast.
Yeah, that's all good. So it's just the, we'll start off.
Mr. Helms?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Is there anybody in the audience that represents any of these cases that are coming before us today on codes enforcement?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can see.
All right. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I could go ahead. I mean, we don't have to listen to them, we've had the opportunity to read them. I make a motion, we approve case 2020-00180 for a fine reduction of $21.44 if paid within 90 days.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right. Nobody opposed, we're good.
Yep. Madam Chair, on the next case, if no one's in the audience on that, case number 2021-00592, Jack De Priest and Anya De Priest, I messed up that name. I recommend that we take the total enforcement action of $4,902 if paid within 90 days.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right, moving along.
Madam Chair, on code case 2010-01408, Eugene Nelson Farrell, I recommend that we take the enforcement cost of $16.71 if paid within 90 days.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. All right.
And Madam Chair, on the next case, 2012-00729, Eugene Nelson Farrell, staff recommendation is that for hard cost of $17.81 if paid within 90 days, and that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on case number 2020-00620, Eugene Nelson Farrell, staff recommends a hard cost to be paid of $18.86 within paid within 90 days, and that's my motion.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Thomas, great presentation.
Sweet and easy.
And just for those watching, I want to say something about this process. We have to do this, we have to bring this into public for public comment, and in case there's somebody who has issues with it. And also, I recently in an article, and I thought it touched, it really touched me regarding how we handle this process, because in some counties, they don't have this process, and there's not an option for fine reduction. And what happens is, properties stay in derelict throughout the county because the fines are much higher than what the property is actually valued at. And it's the only thing that we have as far as teeth is to find somebody. And so we go through this process. Moving on to new business, Parks and Re.
That's me, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission. We have received a request from the TDA, the Transportation Data Analytics Office. They've received funding for additional pedestrian bicycle counters on our Sun Trail Network. They'd like to install on the Dunn's Creek US 17 Trail. That portion of the trail is FDOT and Putnam County, there's a joint operation. They're going to bear the expense of the equipment and the reporting of it and maintenance of it and upkeep of it, and ultimately, when they decide to dispose, they will bear the expense of disposing of it properly and all of that. They'd like to install these non-motorized traffic monitoring for the purpose of collecting and maintaining statistical data on our bikes and our pedestrian walkways, which will then convert to allocating of funding as it becomes available.
Right, right. So we're looking toward a memorandum of agreement. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff? None, okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we authorize you to sign the memorandum of agreement on this non-motorized traffic monitoring program.
As presented, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Sanitation.
Commissioner, if you would allow, I'm going to handle that one as well.
Absolutely.
We did a bid 2318, and it was awarded to a contractor who then subsequently did not complete the project, was brought back to you guys to formally terminate the contract. That's part of our bond process of calling the bonds. The next step was the bond agency reviewed the project and the outstanding scope of work. We received two quotes or solicitations on completing that, sent those to the bond company. The bond company came back and selected the vendor as represented here, and then the bond company has proposed a settlement offer, cutting us a check for the difference between what's remaining in our county budget allocation for the project and to complete the project. So this sum of $31.401 combined with our funds that we already have for this project, it will equal the total of the $65.234. So we are asking that you accept the settlement agreement and that you authorize us to engage the contractor as selected with the bond process.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. I just want the public to know that seldom, and I don't recall that we ever got somebody's bond, but seldom does this ever happen, but this is no blower stain on the county. We do our due diligence upfront, and things happen during the process with contractors, and you know, and that's just part of what goes on. So I appreciate the bonding companies stepping in. I wish they wouldn't have had to do that, but they had to, and our leftover money will make this project whole, so we win, and I really wish the contractor good luck in the future because it is, I mean, nobody wants to start a job and not complete it, but sometimes things happen in business, and it just goes that way. So those are my comments. Madam Chair.
I would also like to say that this is why we have these processes in place, to protect us, which protects our citizens and our tax dollars, and it's really doing the right thing to have bonds. And I know sometimes we get a little, you know, people get upset because they're like, why do you have all these requirements? I can't, I can't be a quad vendor, but we have, we have these requirements in place for situations just like this. Those are my comments. Is there, are there any, any other questions or comments? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the sanitation administration, construction, project bond settlement, and budget resolution 2025-014, and for your signature on that.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, before we go into public comments, do we need, anybody need a break? All right. Public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Excuse me. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits to the right of the podium. Okay? Yes, I do. All right, we do have some comment cards. Mr. Steele? Dan Steele? They're all asking, no, I'll speak with three minutes each. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Dan Steele, live at 202 May Lane in Interlaken, Florida. All three of us are here for the same reason here.
Yes, sir.
Pardon?
I said, yes, sir.
Okay. The contract we have for the MSBU grading, I believe in the past that they've always taken the low bid, and we'd like to see if we could get that changed to use the, throw out the high bid, throw the low bid, and take someone in the center. If there's a couple people haven't checked out, what kind of job they do, if they got the manpower to do it, if they've got the equipment to do it, and go from there, because our roads are deteriorating faster than what, than they have, because I filed a grader yesterday, where we put down $800 of, he's grading it off the edge of the road. So after a while, the clay's gone, and we've got a lot of problems. Tony gets a lot of phone calls from people that have said they haven't had their roads graded, and we also have GPS in those graders, so Tony can go back and say, yes, that road was graded two weeks ago, so they know that it's been done, and he knows where to go to find that grader. Also, the grader operator we have right now, and I could bring a guy in here that is over in District 5, he'll pull off the edge of the road, probably feet up, and talk on the cell phone for a half an hour. Now, that's not helping us a bit, him on the cell phone. And if you want to find out about the roads, you probably should talk to the bus department, because the buses we have are getting tore up by a lot of the roads because they're not graded properly, and we need, we need a lot of work done. So we're all here for that, and they may have some more comments here.
All right. And you are Ralph Haggy.
Ralph Haggy.
Hey, Ralph.
Hi, 112 Paul Drive, Hollister. I can't really top what he just said, it's pretty much about the same thing. And sometimes you pay, if you pay less, that's what you get, you get less. You got to find like a happy medium, you know, so we've got some good graders out there, but we got to have somebody that's got good equipment. So, other than that, y'all, thank you for.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reddick.
My name is Andre Reddick, I live at 410 Jackson Terrace.
Yes, sir, thank you.
In Interlaken. I guess I'm in the West Putnam MSBU. I moved here in 2023, and I heard about the MSBU as the advisory committee for the roads in my area, so I got involved and have been participating. I do want to give a shout out to Tony, who's done a good job with the advisory committee. He's always available, he seems to have a lot of integrity, and he's given us good information on how things work with the MSBU. And I do want to say that there have been some great accomplishments. I've seen more culverts put in. We've got some crushed asphalt on one of our main roads coming in to our MSBU, so I applaud the Commission on getting that done. I'm not sure how that worked out, but we're grateful. And I have been seeing, as Dan was saying, more clay is coming in, and our concern is about how the clay is being used on the roads there. So my main question coming to you today is, based on your policies and procedures, choosing the lowest bid, the only option you have for choosing a contractor for doing maintenance work. And the biggest complaint that I've heard in the two years that I've been involved from neighbors and from people who come to the committee meetings is that the quality of the grading is poor and that the response to things that happen to the roads, we know they're dirt roads, they're not going to be anything more than dirt roads, but they can be maintained, but the response to things like washouts when it rains and when it gets rough because of use of heavy trucks and things like that, or when the side-by-sides decide that it's their own private off-road racetrack and they tear up the roads doing donuts in the intersections, the response from the contractor repairing those problems is very slow. And so those are the biggest complaints that we hear. And so I wonder about always choosing the lowest bid, because typically they have less equipment to use. I only see the grader maybe once every six weeks comes down, coming down my road, and it takes months for things to get fixed when there are ruts and washouts, which happen on a regular basis when it rains real, real hard. And so I do encourage you to look at choosing mid-level bids, if that's something that you can do. I encourage you to include performance metrics in the contract bidding process. A lot of the contractors are known in the area, they have done work, they're able to see what kind of work that they do. And I encourage you to seek feedback from us, your advisory committee. In the two years, no one has ever come to me or been at one of our meetings and have said, you know, we're looking at doing this, what do you think? So use us as your, as your listening board or hearing board. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Reddick, I appreciate that, those were good comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one for our new board members of MSBU, the Municipal Service Benefit Unit. These are vital to West Putnam. The West Putnam MSBU is 95 miles of dirt roads with the highest elevations in Putnam County, so it's not like it's a flat road. It isn't, and I can tell you, it's, it's a challenge out there. When we get rain like we have last couple days, it's really good. When we get eight inches of rain, really bad, it just washes everything out. So even if you tried to pave all that for $95 million or less, you would still have problems with washouts and all that. So it's just a very weird area out there. It's a beautiful elevation, but the MSBU process, and let me say this, what we've done before you got here, and Commissioner Palisir was here back when the MSBU's were going pretty strong, we indexed them a few years ago, so now it's a cost of doing business, and that cost has actually moved on to per lot out there. Before, we never had that availability. So it's very important that we do that, and Tony, I came across an email the other day that you had sent that you asked the contractor to start doing the GPS and all that, which is very important, to know where they've been. It is hard to find a contractor on 95 miles of dirt roads, but I will say, you know, these kids are young too, and we have problems, the minute you grade it, they smell that new clay, and they are out there with their four-wheelers and they're playing around. And then we have a sand pit out there that is privately owned, and they use that, they haul material out of there, a private contractor does. So that area has a lot of challenges, but I don't think it ever will not have challenges, but I think, Tony, you're doing a fabulous job, and I don't think we can change our bidding process, can we, Julianne, to lowest bidder, but we can probably tighten up contracts. So I'll let you talk about that.
So, it's a loaded question, you just asked.
I know, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Public procurement statewide, when you do a bid, it does require the low bid, lowest responsive vendor to be awarded that contract. In cases where they don't meet eligibility, or where we have locally debarred them, or we have had reason to disqualify them from a solicitation, then of course, they, regardless of what their dollar bid would be, they would not be an eligible responsive vendor. Alternatively, you could enter into an RFP, Request for Proposal, but this is not an ideal scenario where we would, as a procurement official, where we would consider this a need for a Request for Proposal.
Thank you, and I remember a time back years and years ago when they did go out for bid, and some out-of-town companies got the bid, and they were double what they, and we had to scrap it and start all over, because again, we couldn't index the fee at that time, so it would have been disastrous. So thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me.
Commissioner Palacier?
This may be a question for our staff, me being in the dark here. How often are these being graded, and are we, have any checks and balances going behind these people to, hey, this is a quality job, hey, maybe we'll go back over this again, or just kind of being sure they're doing what they're supposed to do?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, we, that's a monthly grading in those particular areas. ILA Boulevard, which would be in your district, West Putnam, ILA North, ILA South, those are graded every month. We do our best to get through there once a month to make sure that we're, we're checking behind the contractor, making sure the grading's been done. Sometimes, it's a little bit difficult, depending on the weather, or like Commissioner Harvey talked about, how many times the level of traffic in there. The number of, if the, if the road was graded on Friday, how many people came in there on, over the weekend to go do donuts in the intersection? We definitely do our, try to do our due diligence to see what, to make sure that the work has been done. I would like to say that the new contract that is currently out to bid, we are tightening up those numbers. We are requiring that the contractor have GPS on their equipment, much like Public Works does, because Public Works also gets those phone calls of, well, the motor grader hadn't been to my road in six months, and all we have to do is type it up and say, well, that's incorrect, the motor grader was there two weeks ago.
Right.
So, that's a way of also too, protecting our contractors, along with protecting the county's reputation more or less with the citizens. We actually just amended the contract with a couple of other things to try to, I guess the direction we want to go in is we want to, we, the county needs to dictate how the contractor is getting his work done, to where we're, it's a little more organized, and we can, and there's better accountability. So, this is, there, that is one MSBU, it's ILA South, that's out to bid right now, and that's going to be our, that's more or less our test bed for moving forward, as far as any of the bigger ones, and in the future, as long as it works, and whatever we may have missed or gotten wrong, we can just, we can add to the next contract whenever it comes out to bid, and we'll, we'll just keep on moving forward like that.
In our current situation, the way this works, they do the grading, do they provide the material, or is that up to us? Do we intervene anywhere? Do they do every bid, start to finish, or how does that work?
No, sir, we provide, the MSBU pays for the material, and that's part of the contract. There's a grading and the material delivery and spread, that's all a contracted price. And we're also too, we're in the process of trying to piggyback onto the county's contracted price for material, as far as any other material other than clay, like your Lime Rock and now Shell Rock. We're actually, we've had a lot of luck with the Shell Rock recently, in Commissioner Alexander's area in Satsuma, we were able to really make some time on some of those roads there, and Shell Rock, once it's been, once it's been rolled, it seals itself. I cannot take credit for knowing that, county engineer told me that, so thank you, Scott, I appreciate it. And, but it really does work well. I, I, I'm astounded at how well it holds up after a rain. You would think that it would be a soupy, nasty mess, and it was not, and I've actually went and looked at it after a rain specifically to see what, how it holds up. And that's the way we want to move forward with the main collector roads, whether it's, West Putnam's easy enough to find those main collector roads, they have their main thoroughfares through there, which, yes, is got, is kind of tore up sometime because of the Townsend Pit, or what would be the, the old Townsend Pit, I'm not 100% sure who owns it now. But ILA North and ILA South are different animals. They are, there's a lot of roads out there, there's, that's 100, roughly 133 miles of graded road in those two MSBU's. So, we do work with the Putnam County School District, identifying the bus routes. I get phone calls from the, from transportation, saying when the, you know, the buses are having issues down here. But I will say this, though, the buses, the trash trucks, and honestly, the rural mail carriers are part of the problem. These dirt roads are not made to take a trash truck driving through there as fast as they can to get their route done, slamming on brakes, creating burms. The buses, I, you know, I understand that, you know, that there's a lot of, and there's a lot of people moving in too. So, there is, this problem will not go away. It will continue to get worse as the years go by, so we're just trying to manage it the best we can.
As you were talking about that material, what did you call it, that holds up really well?
The Shell Rock.
Shell Rock. You know, I'm sure it's cheap, it's not as cheap as clay or something else, but we might be getting more bang for our buck by paying a little extra for something that lasts longer and holds up better under wear and tear.
Yes, sir. It's just a matter of staying within budget for the MSBU, so I kind of need to, I need to be picky about where I put it. Also, too, Commissioner Wilkinson, that committee in Bosswick has approved Shell Rock to be taken to some of the roads that are not slated to be paved up there. It's just a way to move forward, and we're trying to really get a, and one, so, one thing that I found out from Scott, again, is that the Shell Rock has a better LBR than Lime Rock does. Is it load bearing rating, is that correct? Okay, so.
Thank you.
We're actually getting, we are around the same price, we're getting a better product to put on the ground than Lime Rock necessarily. So, we're just, like I said, it is a, it's a nuanced, complex problem throughout all of the MSBU's in West Putnam. They all have their own personalities, and you just have to deal with them accordingly.
I understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And just for those listening, ILA means Interlaken Lake Estates. Commissioner Alexander, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a ton of questions for Tony, but he's done a good job of answering most of them, but I applaud you for the work you're doing, and also giving credit to those that have given you the information. You know, a lot of people are so proud, but I know it's difficult just being the pretty face, but I've lived with that my entire.
It's a burden, but one that I live with, I deal with it every day.
Thank you, brother, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right. Are there any other public comments? Come on, sir, you already had a chance, go ahead. I'll let you come back, but come on. That's okay, we're glad you're here. Please say your name and record, your name and record.
My name's Kevin Nelson, I live on 106 Camaro Way.
Pull that microphone up a little closer.
There you go.
I live on 106 Camaro Way, and I've gone through different avenues of trying to address a problem I have. I'm going to read a letter that I submitted a while ago when I did petition to vacate this road. I put, "We are Kevin T. and Melanie V. Nelson. Having been Putnam County residents, our current address is 106 Camaro Way since the early 90s. We chose this location to raise our family because it's secluded and surrounded by nature. Over the years, we have not been able to fully enjoy our property due to frequent nuisances of other people gathering on the north end of Camaro Way, which have been engaged in lotterying, trespassing, breaking into property, theft, vandalism, harassment, discharging of firearms, excessive alcohol consumption, unattended fires, frequent littering, excessive noise without regardless, without regard to the time, day or night." And I've just wanting to, I've talked to Mr. Stout at Public Works recently, and the, the answers I keep getting are a little bit, nothing's definite, nothing's written on what I can do to address this. So, one of my questions is for this of how, how can I communicate or get information on stepping forward? I did petition to vacate the road, that seemed to be Pandora's box, I do believe everything I filled out was correct, but my question is, how do I get information on what's allowed from the, your position on what's allowed to be done on Camaro Way?
So, when you say you petitioned, you filled out formal paperwork already, and it went through the process, or it did not go through the process?
It, it went to Public Works, I talked to Trexler twice, and nothing after that. I did talk to Mr. Stout, I talked to Mr. Harvey, Commissioner Harvey, and it seems to be a gray area, and I'm just wanting to push to get this addressed.
I think we do have a process for that. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Nelson. I mean, this has all we've been through legal also. This is a problem on the south side of George's Lake, and it's a, it's, we don't own it, we don't, the county does have no ownership on this property. Some deeds out there are saying that people have access to the lake, I haven't seen that, I'm just hearing that. Mr. Nelson, you and I talked about trying to move more to the west of your property.
Whatever easement is provided.
Right, and creating a new easement down there that might could help alleviate.
And the biggest one was fire rescue when we, when we first did this as far as.
Well, there, there's a lot of problems, and it was the boat ramp on the north side of the lake, there was a few problems, but we are, we did try, and we went through legal, and we can't give you something that we don't own, was the end result, but.
So, what, what, who do I talk to for, for the steps of legal then?
I would still go back through Public Works and let them go through the channels and bring it back, what's your plan?
Before the board here?
Well, bring it back to us, and we'll probably, Madam Chair, we'll probably do a workshop one day, and that might be on it, and then, we could bring it up or do it here and have a discussion on it. What we can do, but we can't give something away we don't own, that's the key.
Correct, okay, so, so it's, it's a recorded plat, but the county has never accepted it as a dedicated plat?
Correct.
And that's not just your area, there's that, that's happened throughout the entire county.
Well, that's why I said it was Pandora's box, because this opens up a whole new level of, of ownership, which actually would revert back to a budding property.
Correct, that's my, I mean, that's, I'm not a legal counselor.
Right, well, I mean, as far as Chapter 177 in the Florida statutes, that, that pretty much lays out, okay?
But I did like your idea that we talked about in Publix, and I told you that, that day, that I liked that idea, and if we can make that happen somehow.
Well, well, keep in mind, I'm not trying to burn anybody here, and I got neighbors.
I understand that, you wanted to create a new easement on the west.
And I, and I did want to address fire rescue, because right now, if, if they had to use that part of the road, there's no cul-de-sac, no turnaround, it's a mud hole, it'd probably be more of a waste of time or more, more of a problem. We were talking about putting a big swing and a dry hydrant. So, we were talking about helping life safety and working forward here, not burning anybody, so.
And for the new commissioners, we do have dry hydrant on the north side of George's Lake out in Flora Home, but again, we have a very short lease on that. There was a new landowner that bought that out from, I believe it was Rayonier, if I'm not mistaken, but, so we are working with that new landowner to try to, to have a more permanent location there, but we're not sure that that's going to happen either, so.
Okay, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, all right. With that, we'll close out public comments. Did you have something? I'll let you come back up real quick.
I'll say it for the next meeting.
All right, that'll be great, thank you.
Or any questions?
All right, no problem. Appointments, do we have any appointments, starting with Commissioner Alexander?
I have none.
All right, Commissioner Newbold?
None today.
Commissioner Palacier?
None.
Commissioner Harvey? Let me look real quick. All right, I don't believe I have any. All right, Clerk Reynolds had told me he couldn't be here, he's at a, at another event. County Attorney, do you have any comments?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
County Administrator?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, just quickly, and I don't want to steal any Commissioner's thunder, but we had a great weekend of events here in Putnam County. Enjoyed the Bass Master Elite Tournament this weekend, enjoyed visiting the weigh-in for the afternoon with our, our chair, and the event, as far as the Zouia Festival, that's, that went on at the time was a phenomenal success. Kathy Griffin and her team deserves all the, all the accolades they can, they can get out, because it was an excellent event. My wife and I were there both Saturday and Sunday all day, and, you know, the comments I heard up and down the street were nothing but positive comments about Putnam County, and I'm going to tell you, the comments that we heard Thursday at the weigh-in.